All right, good afternoon and welcome to this.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, welcome to this evening's work session. We're gonna start off by conducting roll call, Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
Madam Clerk, sure we're all present for the work session. First item of business would be to see if anyone has any discussion points for the next, for the preliminary items for the next BLC meeting. Anything that anyone want to discuss in reference to the items?
Chairman, I haven't seen the items, I'm sorry. I haven't seen the items for the next BLC meeting.
Commissioner, they're in draft form because next week we don't have any meetings, so the deadline was pushed until next week.
The following week.
So we only have a draft form.
So, there was only a few items that was on there. I think we had some budgetary items. Do we have any budgetary? Okay. Well, since we don't have anything to show, yeah, but you don't have it in that form where you can send it to them. So, I apologize, Commissioners, for those items not being on there. But like the Clerk said, it was in reference to next, actual next week, because we have five Tuesdays in this month, that the agenda wouldn't be published until next week. So, with that being said, we'll proceed on to our work session items. First one is the, let me see. Mr. Reed, I think you're presenting the Ordinance 2021-100 to amend Clayton County's code.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board Members. I previously spoke about, well, it's called Ordinance 2021-100, but that'll be updated with the most current, that will require Boards and Authorities to transmit to the Clerk minutes of their meeting no later than five business days after there, it's been approved by the Board. And I think last time there was some discussion about the ordinance. I'm here to answer any questions. I can explain what the ordinance does. It puts the onus on the Chair of that particular Board or Authority. They'll be responsible, or they can designate somebody, a Clerk if they have one, to provide minutes of any meetings that they have to the Clerk, five business days after it's been finally approved by that Board or Authority. It also gives the Clerk the authority to set the method and manner of how the minutes should be provided. Also, it gives each Board or Authority forty-five days, or every appointee forty-five days, to undergo training under the Open Meetings and Open Records Act, and that is also designated by the Clerk. The change to this ordinance only applies to those Boards or Authorities that prepare meetings subject to the Open Meetings Act, or any other state law that requires approval of their minutes and so forth. So, if there are any other questions about this, I'm willing to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Reed?
Yes, Chuck, you said, so does this apply to all of our Boards, or are there some that are exempt, and if they are exempt, which one?
There aren't any that, right now, that would be exempt, but I wrote the ordinance such that if there was some reason down the line that there wouldn't be a Board or Authority that would be subject to this, we wouldn't have to come back and rewrite the ordinance to apply to that. So, right now, every Board and Authority that is, that this.
That we make appointments for.
Makes appointments for, would be subject to the Open Meetings Act.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Now, is this just saying that, once those minutes are received by the Chairman's office, or the COO, or is this saying, is there anything about being posted to our website so that we know that we are received?
The Clerk will make sure that it's posted. It basically gives her, or him, the Clerk, the authority to put them, it puts it on that Clerk to be able to do what they need to do with it once they receive it. The main thing is just puts it on the Board to actually provide those minutes to the Clerk. I believe that Ms. James already has a process of posting it on the website and all that kind of stuff. It's really been more of the issue of not getting minutes from Boards, so that it can be updated to put on the county's website.
Yeah, 'cause I think if we're gonna take this through to where it does have good meat, is that we need to make sure that it is posted to that site, or posted socially in some manner, when received or within a due process of receipt.
On a website, there's a link that you can go to where all the minutes are posted from every Board meeting.
Correct. But we want to make sure that they're posting a timely manner, even after received, for that as well.
Yeah, and that's what this does. It, again, puts the onus on to the Chairperson to be responsible for that. And let me also just add that, we gotta be mindful that some Boards, first of all, we want to make sure that the minutes are approved by the Board. So, it will be after that particular Board meeting, and then the following meeting, that the Board approves it, then it's sent to the Clerk's office, then it'll be posted. But keep in mind that some Boards be, may be quarterly.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, it'll be three or four months before they meet again to approve the minutes, before it's posted. So, it's not, will not be a monthly update, just as a point of reference.
And it would be Boards, of course, that you all appoint members to.
Okay, I have a question, Chairman. Maybe this is not the right word, but who will police this?
So, the, there's already within the ordinance mechanisms to police when appointees do or fail to do items that are required by the ordinance. For instance, the ethics ordinance requires people to turn in certain disclosures within a certain period of time. And if they don't, there is, there can be a penalty for that. So, it would fall under that same scheme. So, if the Clerk does not get minutes within a certain period of time, Clerk can make Chairman available, aware of it, or any Board Member, aware that they have not gotten minutes from a particular Board, and then the Board could decide what they want to do with that information once you receive it.
But the Chairperson of each Board is the ones responsible.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Reed. Residential architectural design standards. Mr. E. J. K.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, good evening. We have two items, and the first of the items we have is the residential architectural standards. And I have with me this evening Ms. Raquel Obumba, who's going to present it, and we will take questions after that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody's doing well. So, we have been working on developing these architectural design standards in an effort to help the housing stock in Clayton County. Essentially, the ultimate goal is to create a housing stock that's more cohesive, also help housing developers have a good sense of what types of materials and things we want to see in the county, but ultimately, we hope that this will help attract more residents and different types of residents to Clayton County. Some of these, the standards, or, excuse me, some of the characteristics that we are focusing on within these architectural design standards are the garage size, the mechanical setup, which would help with making sure that the homes are energy efficient, decks, making sure that we're consistent with what we expect from decks, as far as like how large they are, how far they can go back with on the property, landscaping, making sure that developers are also not only just building the houses nice, but we're also creating great landscaping and great curb appeal. Lastly, the incline of driveways, I'm sure we've all experienced where we've visited homes and they have those very steep driveways, and you know, they're not necessarily compliant for ADA, and also, they can create a lot of problems with the resident. Also, fencing, so fencing specifically is geared towards, excuse me, residential, it's single-family attached houses, so I know everybody has visited those townhomes, where sometimes they have a complete open back, and you can, if you're standing on one side, you can look all the way down, but you have to also have those like kind of privacy walls that are fences, so making sure that they, the developers are adding those in as well. And, so like I say, essentially what we're trying to do here is create a template for these housing developers to use as a basis for when they approach the county with their new housing developments, and also, if there is a rebuild that has, that's coming back in a aesthetically pleasing and cohesive manner, so again, so we can attract more people to the county, and attract different types of people from various income levels to the county. Use, when we develop these, we looked at other counties and their residential design standards. Some counties don't even have residential design standards, they just kind of, I guess, go on a case-by-case basis, but we did receive some feedback and looked at their, their design standards as a template, and then we looked at what we have been approving recently as well, and use those as our basis for developing the standards. If you go to the next slide, there, so, as I mentioned previously, this is a bit small, but these are some of the details behind the different features that I discussed, so the exterior facade, creating different visually appeasing things like shutters, covered porches, bay windows, e-brackets. The garages, making sure that they're a decent-sized garage. Mechanical would be more so going back to the energy efficiency. If it's over a certain level, or a certain amount of square footage, making sure that there's at least two condenser units to create that energy efficiency, kind of have more centralized control of the airflow. As I mentioned, the decks only permitted in the rear, just making sure, again, we're creating that aesthetically appeasing backyard, and making sure that it falls within the appropriate setbacks. Landscaping, making sure that the front yards are sodded properly, and there's trees planted, and as I mentioned, the driveways, as far as the percentage of the incline. Before even presenting this to you guys, we also wanted to go to the people that would be affected by this, and that was the, we solicited feedback from several builders that build within Clayton County, and we also sent them to the Greater Atlanta Home Builders Association, the Council for Quality Growth and Habitat for Humanity for review.
All right. Are there any questions?
Yes, this is.
Commissioner Hambrick.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, what's her last name?
Obumba.
Obumba.
Obumba. Yeah, this is Hambrick. On the garages, you said, what would you consider a decent size?
So, we did some research and found that for a standard two-car garage, twenty feet by twenty feet is a good standard size.
Okay, so we have that written in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, this is an issue I've had a few questions, and I wouldn't say really a problem, but yes, I do. I go in these subdivisions and all, and more people park on the street than in the driveway. They'll have a garage or two, but a car, maybe one car can get in the driveway, is it some way we can have, I guess, maybe deeper setbacks or something? I would like to see that, because we don't have enough parking in these subdivisions, and it's a safety issue. We had a kid get hit on the subdivisions up here on East Bay one morning running to his bus, and a car approaching, did not see him because cars were parked on the street, and he ran between the car that was parked. So, is it some way we can have better, I mean, well, I guess, maybe a deeper setback than what we have now? Hopefully, that will help prevent so many street parking in the, in the subdivisions.
Yes, Commissioner, they are a retail way, but more importantly, the things that happen in the past we didn't have control. In the land development ordinance, you're, it's required that you have what is called a landing, and that landing is twenty feet, where you can park a car, and it's not gonna be on an incline, and the car not supposed to protrude into the sidewalk, so people who are walking in the evening are not going around and getting in the street. So, in the new subdivisions, when it's being reviewed, we want to make sure that landing, twenty feet, the depth of a car, which are my allowance, is actually met before the sidewalks are actually going place.
Let me ask you this, okay, you have your garage, is it possible to have two cars parked?
Yes.
Which really would be a total of four cars, you know, say it's a double-car garage, can we park two cars behind that, or is it a single, single garage, but can we park two cars on the, in the driveway?
Yes, you can. The residential requirement is four cars, two in the garage and two on the driveway, but.
But have you ever measured these cars, especially some of these SUVs?
Have not really went to go measure them, but.
But I'm just thinking, it would be hard to get two, I mean, not even the long SUVs, those, what are they called, mid-size?
Yeah. If you park them back-to-back, maybe you're not gonna get it. What we are pushing, that's why we want the garage, double-car garage, even in townhomes. We are pushing this policy, we get some pushback sometimes, they say yes, we would like to codify it. If you park them side-by-side, you can have two in the garage and two in the driveway, but if you park them behind each other, no, you are right, Commissioner, it will jolt into the sidewalk.
Well, a lot of our older housing stock is only one-car garages.
One-car garage, yes.
And that poses a problem for those who have two and three cars. But this ordinance addresses that, where they, it's mandatory that there would be two-car garages with every.
What we're actually doing right now, hoping that nobody really pushes back on us, even townhomes, that'll be double-car garage, they actually look better in design. If you go to any area that have one-car garage townhomes, and stand on the street, close your eyes, openly reflect, they look like rural houses. But when you go to ones that have bigger widths, wider width, they don't look that way, they look more balanced in aesthetics. So, those are the kind of things we're trying to put in place.
Well, yeah, Mr. E. J. K., I hope we can address this and write it, because I have two things coming before me, and that's mine, that's gonna be one of the issues that I'm going to present to these builders, is that along with the garage, that if two cars can back each other up in the driveway, because I just see too many subdivisions, whatever, with cars parked in the street and all. Can we, I don't think twenty feet will do it.
Twenty feet is like the minimum, unless you have a long driveway, which means that the lots are bigger, but with developers and builders trying to get as many lots as they can, the lots are not that deep. So, it's really where the math doesn't work out. If I force you to put two cars in the driveway, then where is the building gonna go and all the setbacks? But the one that actually works, it's the lot sizes that we have in our zoning classifications will allow the double-car garage, where you have two cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway.
Well, I mean, that's gonna be, because I really would like to have two cars backing up each other, and it just makes for a better subdivision, better looking area. I've gone to other counties and I've seen it, and I know it, you know, that it just looks better than having cars on the street. I don't like cars on the street, and I'm in an older subdivision and all, but, you said that's the minimum, so does that mean we cannot increase that number?
No, 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 we can, when it's possible, but the thing is, what I was talking about, the lot, the newer lots are smaller lots. That's one of the reasons why you see a bunch of folks asking for PUD. The newer, the older subdivisions have depth, they set, they sit back about sixty feet from the road, therefore, they have more land and more, and a longer driveway, and you can do that. The newer subdivisions, what, how it starts? It starts with, it starts with profit in mind, then they pack the subdivision and know where it's possible, and what will push for that to happen.
Okay, 'cause I'm thinking now, are we, 'cause are we trying to make that, give them some way of making more money, or are we gonna consider our citizens? You know, as far as that comes, and we're talking about making, you know, the county beautiful and having quality housing and all that, and I think that will be back to me as a part of the quality in the houses that will be built. If folk know they can't come here and just cram, you know, a hundred and something houses in a smaller area, then they'll respect that. Anyway, I don't wanna see that, I, you know, that's gonna be a big issue for me.
Any other questions?
I do. Would this be more area-specific? I know we're talking about, these are minimum requirements, that would be throughout the county, but I know there's certain areas that might not want those minimums, they want, might want to increase those minimums. So, I want to say, how would that, how would that work?
How that would work is that this is the minimum, it does not mean it cannot increase.
Correct, I understand that. Now, if we have, that minimum is based off of, I would think, a minimum lot size.
Yes.
As that lot size is increasing, can we increase those minimums accordingly, or would those be, or would those be points that we can emphasize in standards? And how would we do that? That's one. And then the other part is too, with custom building, is, right now, what is the standard warranty for a builder to have on a home, to put on a home?
There's a one-year warranty that we don't get involved in, that within one year of building a new house, it's between the homeowner and the builder.
Okay.
We can only be an intermediary, get the builder to talk to the owner. Most builders want to be good corporate citizens, and they don't want us to see them adversely.
Understand.
Yeah.
Totally. But when water has receded and we have foundation issues, which we have looked at, those don't happen the first three-hundred-and-sixty-five days.
It doesn't.
And I've spoken to two builders in particular, and they, they actually told me, if we want to begin to address that, we need to begin to put in, to increase the warranty in some of these standards. Now, legally, I'm not sure how we would do that, or if we can be, if it can be done legally, it's something that we might want to begin to consider doing, taking that warranty from one year to three years, because most folks that homes that will have any kind of failure point, it's not gonna be the first year. You might have a washer and dryer, or a heating element, but not the foundation, not the roof. And we've gotten, I've gotten several calls from several subdivisions, where we're talking erosions, we're talking foundations issues, and now, I understand the whole builder beware, but we want to begin to, begin to protect these folks' largest investments that they are possibly gonna have in their lifetime.
Yes, sir, we'll talk to legal to see what we can do. Some of those smaller builders, they open businesses, like create, open a business to do a subdivision, close it. Usually, my, my little little bit is a liability issue, create a, that's a smaller one, create a business, do a subdivision, and close the business, so you don't have anybody to really go to. So, but I'll talk to legal to see how we can go, that the one is between the builder and the homeowner.
Correct.
For the second and third year, is that we have a way of coming to you, coming to the builder and saying that. And in some cases, what folks do not understand is that, when a subdivision is developed, the builder and the developer sometimes are not one and the same. They develop and sell, because the roaming part is the quicker part, the building part is the longer part, so they develop and sell, so we're gonna kind of talk to legal, figure out how we put all this in the right space.
Great. Okay.
Yes, hello?
Commissioner Franklin, go ahead.
Yes, we, thank you all for the presentation. So glad to see that we have everybody to the table, we're at the table discussing architectural design standards. And I know this is a conversation that started in 2017, when we first began, under a previous outsourced law firm, and we spent quite a bit of money on developing this, and I know things have to be updated, so that's fine. But I think one thing that the Board has to keep in mind, is the right to own land and property is a constitutional right, and as a Board, we have to be mindful to stick with what we can police, which is, like you said earlier, the property term actually. We can only police through zoning. The architectural designs is one that we do have the ability and the latitude of at this moment, and whatever we decide to do, we probably need to come together on it and do it as a Board as soon as possible, because I don't know if this Board remembers, but it was just a session ago, that the ability to be able to impact architectural design standards was being threatened, or through our, through our home rule. And that's something that ACCG fought to make sure that we remain, that we continue to have that ability to police architectural design standards. So, as we're moving through this process, I would urge us to, A, make sure that we connect with ACCG, and I think Todd is the one, and see where they were on that, so that we can ensure that we're moving in a direction that will allow us to maintain that home rule, and not be caught up in some things that we don't want to deal with later down the road. But number two, we also have to be very careful when we're talking about warranties and all of that. Our policing powers as a Board, according to, you know, our state, and the home rule does not include anything inside the home, we have to be very careful with that, because then we are taking on liability and ownership that's outside of our authority as a Board and as a government, especially in the middle of warranties. I know that is an issue, but what we have to do as a county is to make sure that we inform folks as much as possible, even as Commissioners and our leaders, it is incumbent upon them to get an inspector to inspect their home. All we're looking at as a Board is the land, as Mr. E. J. K. so well stated earlier, we're looking at the land, we're looking at whether or not it's safe, looking at zoning, but when we start talking about warranties and all of that, I understand a building, they say that, but the bottom line is that's outside of our policing authorities, and we have to be very, very careful, because when we step outside that line, then we give an implication that we have some type of authority and liability in that area. So, I just would like for us to be mindful of that, and then also, as I stated before, let's tap into ACCG and see where they are on the votes in the architectural designs.
I can say this, ACCG did oppose that legislation last year, that they were putting forth, where the builders could have, in a sense, carte blanche, to build what they wanted to build. They were, they were opposed to that.
Right.
So, and, and they have it on, I believe, this year's policies to begin to address as well again.
Yeah, you're exactly right. I'm sorry.
When I'm speaking of, when I'm speaking of warranties, we have to proceed with caution whatever we do with somebody's public, private property, I understand that, but the calls that we've received over the past few years have been on the dwelling itself, the foundations of the dwelling, the roof, the facade, the, what am I thinking, the foundations, and that's what we have to begin to take care of here, I think, for our citizens. And we've got to begin to hold these folks that want to build, they should be able to make whatever type of money they want to, want to make. So, I truly believe we should put forth an environment that is gonna allow them to do that, but we've got to make sure that we take care of our citizens in a way that three, four, or five years down the road, they're not. they're not getting hit with a bill, um, that is ten to fifteen, twenty percent of their home value in order to rectify and fix. And if we can do that through one kind of policy, we should, we need to look at it.
Commissioner Franklin.
Uh, I apologize, I need to delay, I apologize. And I totally agree with you, but all I'm mentioning is, where are we in, what, what is our role in that process? Remember, we hired, if I'm not mistaken, there's still a contract out there, that we hired inspectors. Remember, as a government, our inspectors go out and inspect these properties. So if we need to increase the level of inspectors from the county standpoint, then we need to look at that. We need to look at what is within our authority to protect the citizens. But also, as I stated before, it is incumbent upon the citizens to make sure that they get a private inspection. And the reason I'm saying that is because oftentimes, that's not something that most home buyers even do because they think that the builder or developer, as Mr. Jiki said, who are not one and the same, have their best interest at heart. And so with that being stated, we have to be very careful with that, what's within our authority as a board. The only thing we have the authority to do is to make sure that we're getting the proper reports from our inspectors on that property, uh, and those properties that we are approving for those certificate of, uh, certificate of occupancies. So if we approve something, we gotta be careful. If we approve something and you're saying the issue is two, three years down the line, then we gotta look at our process and our procedures to make sure that we've got enough folks in place to, um, do that job ahead of time. Um, that, that, that's what I was just mentioning on that. And you're right, they did fight that, um, they need ACCG. But that's an ongoing conversation. So I would just like, you know, at the end of the day, it's better for, as we move forward as the county government, that we move forward with strength as well. And so with that, it's important, if we've got some folks like ACCG who are out there continuing that fight, that we just tie in to make sure that what we're putting forward is going to allow us to be strong and, and not have it combated, as we all know. We disapprove certain things, and sometimes it goes before a judge, and then it comes back before us, and we could lose, um, all ability to affect the outcome. So, um, the point that we bring out is just for us to ensure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's as we move through this process. So thank you.
So what I'm hearing, Mr. Jiki, is just to do your research and those things that could be done legally. Then let's bring that back, further discussion on that. But yeah, just make sure you, everything that's being requested, they're dead on. Let's just see what we can affect and what we can't.
All right, sir.
Any other questions? All right, you got a second part of this?
Uh, yes. Yeah, uh, on the second part of our department's presentation, it's, uh, it's only text amendment. Two issues in the, that we want to clarify. There are more than two in the code. But when it, it, it start putting pressure on us and we're having issues with it, we will bring it forth. But, uh, today, I want to discuss some conflicts in definition, uh, with regards to fitness center and, um, how it's referenced in a code twice. Uh, we also want to, um, uh, talk about defining it so that it's clear with staff who, uh, implemented this, so they're not confused. And when, um, some attorney's pushed back, they can have something to rely on. The code is always our go-to when somebody pushes back. So, using code as it's, as it's written today, you have GB in these three MXs. MX, MX mixed-use district, MXI mixed-use, commercial industrial district, and MXR mixed-use residential district. What happened is that since we have an issue with GB in itself, then it permits those three classifications. So we want to fix the definition or the, the permitted use of fitness centers and gym in GB so that it's corrected in the MX, MXI, and MXR. We want to do three things, really. This is really kind of what we want to do. Define fitness center as a term. Uh, we permitted and prohibited uses. We're working on the definition, looking at, um, the planning dictionary, looking at other jurisdictions to make sure we get it right so that it's not too loose, that it can be interpreted into something else. In GB, the lead fitness center and gyms are a conditional use. Um, right now, it shows in two places, conditional use and a permitted use. It cannot be so. It has to be one of them. It's either we want to do it as conditional use or as a permitted use. And our recommendation is that it's allowed as a permitted use. Think about gyms and fitness centers, the places that we travel to. They are in shopping centers, they are in GB. Uh, you can go shop, then go do some exercise or do whatever and leave. So that's why we want to make that correction. Uh, the third thing we want to do to, with regards to this is, folks come to us, say they want to do a dance studio. They describe dance in so many ways. One of the issues we have in is that you don't approve a dance studio. Club Fifty-Four at one point started, Club Fifty-Four started as a dance studio. So we want to, when they, we want to make sure we put in our code instructional dance studio. So that means it's not where everybody shows up, playing and go dance. It has to be instructional in nature. That means they are teaching dance formats in there. So we want to make that correction. So these are the three, uh, things we wanted to fix. And, uh, in the code, so that we can, we have, um, a number of people, I think we have one or two applications that is, um, waiting on this. We have a whole lot of folks we've been arguing with. And we sat down, analyzed it, and actually went to, actually know of places in the metro that have, uh, gyms in GB, in where they have retail stores next to them. And it looks real, real nice. And so that's what, the same thing we want to replicate here.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Jiki?
I do. What would be the difference between a dance studio and a karate studio? Because would those both fit under fitness?
It would fit under fitness. That's the reason why we wanted to define fitness. Because fitness is not fitness from twenty years ago. There's a lot of things that, that are now classified as fitness.
Okay.
Yeah.
And which ones would be, I guess, a, a gymnasium, a, a weightlifting gymnasium would still be a conditional use?
Uh, yes, there, uh, indoor recreation. If someone comes to say they are doing indoor recreation. So in our definition and the way we are doing the research, we want to make sure that something that has an intense use will not go there. So that's why we're doing the research, to make sure how we're defining it.
And I understand that, and, and I applaud that. Because I'm thinking of something that is, in a sense, new. The CrossFit. People are opening up CrossFit studios.
Yes.
CrossFit was never heard of really ten years ago. So someone that would come with a new version of aerobic or some kind of fitness, how would we begin to, would we have to come back and rewrite this again?
Now, we are looking at all of that and segmenting where you have, um, indoor recreation will be something like, um, I don't want to give the wrong example. Some, the, the intensity of use is different. Um, there are so many things going indoors these days. We don't want it to be in our GB area that the way our zoning in the county is laid out is such that you cannot inject them in this type of use. So that's why we're doing that research, about to conclude it so that we can define it and put some of them as a conditional use. So that when they're coming, we can kind of have the ability to bring them before you before they start doing anything.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jiki.
Thank you.
And let's move on to the ARP, American Rescue Plan Act Treasury Funding. And I believe Dr. Smith and Mr. Johnson will present.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair Commissioners. Myself and Mr. Johnson will provide an overview of American Rescue Plan Act as well as requests for funding, um, from community stakeholders. The goal is to assist state, local, and tribal governments. The American Rescue Plan Act provided three hundred and fifty billion dollars in emergency funds for eligible state, local, and tribal governments to respond to the COVID emergency and bring back jobs. Clayton County was allocated sixty-six million. Funds may cover the cost from March third, twenty twenty-one, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Funds must be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And all funds must be expended and all work orders performed and completed by December of twenty twenty-six. Next slide. So the funding objectives is to support, um, urgent COVID response, replace lost revenue, um, through state and local governments, as well as support economic stabilization for households and businesses. And, um, provide a systematic address of public health economic challenges that have been contributed to in equal impact of the pandemic. What we're doing is looking at the interim rule. It's a hundred and fifty-one pages currently, so we're going through it and vetting the process of it. Next slide. These are some key dates of the Recovery Reform Fund. We, um, June fourth, twenty twenty-one, we received the thirty-three million dollars. Um, in this, we'll go over some, um, performance measurements, deadlines, that, um, we have to abide by through the funding. And then December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, again, all funds must be spent, all work performed, and must be complete, completed. Next slide. These are some allowable categories that the Department of Treasury provided in terms of guidance. You have public health response. That's funds COVID, um, efforts through medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and some public health and safety staff. You also have, um, public sector revenue lost. You have water and sewer infrastructure. You have the address to, um, negative in, economic impacts, how we respond to economic harms, um, through workers, families, small businesses, and any other public sector that was impacted by, um, COVID nineteen, as well as premium essential, um, pay for essential workers and broadband infrastructure. Next slide. This is the chairman's priority for Clayton County. Of course, it's in order of priority. It's the public health response, our negative, um, impact, uh, replacement of lost revenue, our broad, broadband infrastructure, our premium pay for essential workers, and our water and sewage infrastructure. So just to give you an overview of what, um, the hu, public health response is, it's a range of services when it comes to COVID containment. It's a range of services and programs that we are utilizing, needed to contain COVID nineteen, as well as medical expenses, some behavioral healthcare. Uh, we can use this to meet the mental health, substance abuse, and other behavioral healthcare needs, um, with the effects of COVID nineteen, as well as public health and safety for staff. Next slide. Negative, um, economic impacts. Assistance to households, uh, will be households and unemployed workers impacted due to COVID. Job training, food, housing, cash, and other assistance to households, as well as small business loans and grants. We can do some public sector to replenish, um, state unemployment insurance funds, as well as rehire staff that, um, lost their jobs and impact industries as it relates to tourism and travel. The replace of lost revenue, um, the Census Bureau has a definition of what the general revenue is and how we provide that through government services. So the general, um, definition for the general revenue is money that is received from taxes, current charges, miscellaneous general revenue, and intergovernmental transfers between state and local, local governments. Some of those exclusions are federal intergovernment transfers to county, including the CARE Act's funding, and intergovernmental transfers from a federal government. Definitions of government services is, um, health services, and these are services that are included but not limited to health services, environmental, um, environmental remediation, school and educational services, police, first responders, and public safety services. Another part of the revenue is how do the requirements that we are using to calculate that? So counties must adhere to the following. Um, they should calculate the revenue on an entity-wide basis. Uh, we cannot use pre-pandemic projections as a base of the estimate for the reduction of the revenue. And we should calculate the extent of the reduction in revenue in the four points of time, and those from December thirty-first of the year's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. In formulating this lost revenue, our recipients must identify revenues collected for the most recent fiscal year prior to, uh, the pandemic, which is prior to January twenty-seven, twenty twenty, as well as identify revenues collected over the past twelve months. And then if the actual revenues are less than the counterfactual revenue, the entity can, revenue can receive revenue loss income from this funding. However, if it exceeds the counterfactual, you cannot. You have to, um, enter, receive zero revenue loss for it. Then we have broadband infra, infrastructure. It's actually underserved or unserved households, um, as well as projects that rely on services due to a geographical location. So more so like in rural areas to upspeed, um, the internet services. Next slide. And then premium pay. Uh, what the Department of Treasury has stated as it relates to premium pay, it's really workers, um, that are needed to continue the operations, um, in the sector. Those would be your janitors, sanitation workers, truck drivers, transient workers, public health, public safety, childcare workers, social service workers, human service workers. Um, the essential work that's defined, defined by this funding is working in environment in person, interactions or reg, regular, physically handling, handling of items that are handled by others. What is not considered is anything that's considered telework. It's not considered any essential work. Other provisions related to the premium pair, pay is, um, you can retroactive this pay from January twenty-seven, twenty twenty. And then counties should prioritize premium pay for those individuals that are low to moderate income. The last is the water and sewer infrastructure. And this is basically aligned with the EPA, um, project categories as it relates, relates to the clean water, um, state revolving funds. So those are projects to, um, improve, construct, and repair wastewater treatment plants, anything that's related to green infrastructure, um, and anything to improve infrastructure to severe weather events. And then you have the drinking water state revolving fund. And those are infrastructure capital improvements. So anything, including installation and replacement of some type of failing treatment and distribution systems, as well as ensuring compliance with applicable health and environment safety requirements. Next slide. So what's not eligible? Um, pension funds are not eligible and other restrictions. So we cannot use this funding to match any federal requirements. Um, and we cannot use it to debt, um, fund debt services, legal settlements, or judgments. And we cannot use this for a rainy day or any financial reserves. Next slide. The Office of Performance Management and Finance will collaborate in, um, making sure that we adhere to all of the reporting requirements. Uh, we're still getting guidance from the Department of Treasury, um, and we have some stuff coming down. Um, they sent out the first reporting requirements, uh, June seventeenth. But the interim report is, the first one is due August thirty-first. And that's basically what are the categories that we are utilizing the funding for. Um, and it's, the reporting dates are the day we receive the funding. So our first, um, receipt of funding was June fourth till July thirty-first. And then we have, um, quarterly project and expenditure reports, which is due October thirty-first. And that's covering the financial data or any contracts or subawards that we provided over fifty thousand dollars. And again, that timeline is from the day we received the funds, which was June fourth till September, um, thirty of twenty twenty-one. And then we have annual, what we call Recovery Plan Performance Reports. That's an annual report that we have to provide information on the description of the projects, information, performance indicators. description of the projects, information, performance indicators, and objectives. The first one is due August 31. However, this report, we actually have to put on our website and make sure that the public is aware of how we're doing that. Next slide.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm briefly going to go through the projects here to give you kind of context as to what requests have been made by our partners. I've provided each of you a memory stick with the detail of every request that's been made. The first request is through Clayton County Water Authority. The first two categories are for debt relief for those individuals affected by COVID, and also hardship, to double the hardship assistance provided by the Water Authority. They are also looking for reimbursement of their COVID costs, and there are several large capital enhancements that is allowed by the code. The next one, next slide, is the Tourism Authority, and they've requested funding for several static billboards and also to enhance using digital billboards to promote the county. We've also requested to, that has been vetted before, medical examiner contract for over the next three-year period in the amount of $4,300,000. The next one is from the Police Department. There are two requests that they have made, and this is to finance an additional social worker, and also AED devices in each of the patrol cars to have a direct impact on the health of citizens on the street. The next request is from the Clayton County Community Service Board. And we're looking at, you know, they have a budget shortfall, and they're also looking for operating revenues to have the, to fund the Behavioral Crisis Center. And there's other, some other premium pay, electronic records, broadband, and COVID costs to recover in the amount of $20.7 million. The next request is from Southern Regional, and the first amount is $4,395,000. And that is for nurses. There's a tremendous shortage at Southern Regional in terms of nurses, and they're trying to enhance their recruiting practices to fill the positions that are currently vacant. Phase 1B, 2A, and 2B are infrastructure to help improve the infrastructure within the hospital for any future, current and future pandemics in the facility. That's $17.7 million. The next request is $2,568,000 for information technology. And this is to enhance servers, but also has a primary focus on cybersecurity for the county as well. The next amount is some physical costs for both Superior and State Court that they're going to need as they move to open the courts. In this particular category, we anticipate some additional requests from the courts. Given the backlog of all the courts from the pandemic, we anticipate that there'll be requests to help aid the courts over the next several years to provide equity in the courts and also to speed up, you know, to provide speedy trials for everybody there as well. The project that we have here is requested is from the Fire and Sema. And there's a public health initiative to expand testing, to expand employee health, and to provide additional mobile clinic that was used so heavily during the pandemic. And there's also a water sewer infrastructure there for some of the programs and flooding in particular areas that are unsafe in the county. Next slide. In human resources, we were presented with several premium pay options in the amount of $25,900,000 for various premium pay requests. The Alzheimer's Senior Center was requested through Senior Services to provide deferred maintenance of the Alzheimer's Service Center, and also to add additional operating costs to help fund their shortfall. The next area was in community development. They would like to spend funding on a down payment assistance, emergency home repair, and also set up a CHODO or a community housing development organization for a total of $5,850,000. The Clayton Housing Authority has two major, with several components underneath each one, and there is a construction cost for new construction and rehab in the amount of $5,637,600, and also investments in housing in neighborhoods in the amount of $6,579,600. The Chamber of Commerce has made three requests. Small Business Council for $75,000. The educational disparities is to provide additional workforce development for those who have been affected, and also health and wellness for health disparities in the community as well. Economic Development has requested $5 million for small business grants, Housing Development Partnership for $5 million, business attraction campaign, county marketing, and a nonprofit HUD to purchase a building for the nonprofits hub in the county. And that's $12 million request. And the last request is from the Development Authority for both job training and an additional small business grant amount to be provided to small businesses in Clayton County for a million, $2,175,000. Again, we talked about the timeline. Obviously, the presentation here to you today to kind of give you the framework. We anticipate some public information, additional sessions for the community, both virtual and in person, to make recommendations and to provide final projects for approval by the board moving forward. And then we anticipate being able to use the $33 million we've already received to start funding projects in August. And the last slide is just to give you an idea of context of, we've received $135 million worth of requests, and we have $66 million in awards over the next two years. Any questions?
Some's not adding up.
I thought we just got done with the question.
Yeah.
Exactly.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson or Dr. Smith?
I guess.
Go ahead. I do have a question. Has this list been approved?
No. No, they still have to cut it down and then bring it before us for approval.
The next step for us is as we receive these, we have to vet them to determine that they comply with the Treasury requirements first.
Okay, because I saw a couple of things in there that in the beginning I heard that the money could not be used for. Yet some of the requests did have some of those things listed, so.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to know if that list has been approved and if it has.
It has not been vetted yet.
The reason for this presentation is to let you know what the process was and what organizations are requesting.
Okay. I know. One other question is my last one. Is this money to be shared with the cities municipalities, or is this county strictly county?
Strictly county funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Each city got their own allotment.
I have a question.
Commissioner Franklin.
And just looking at the process, the very detailed process that we began undergoing several months ago, or a couple months ago through the state, specifically with funding coming to Clayton County through transportation. With that in mind, what is the exact process for us being able to identify and prioritize these projects that they've been presented to us this evening? What is the measuring mechanism that will be utilized to figure out what is of most essential need to our county based upon not only the requirements from the federal government, but also the direct impact to our community?
I think in the initial go-round, we've outlined some priorities in terms of mitigating the health risks to individuals, minimizing and trying to minimize the impact of economic downturn for any individual. And the projects, I think if you recall, Dr. Smith had a slide that was in the priority of how to maybe start to vet those particular projects.
And we're also, Commissioner, we're also looking at the rule to ensure that, based off the priority list, we're making sure that those projects can be funded as well. And then we're bringing it back to the board.
Right. And I'm very clear on the fact that the completion date has to be done as well. It's been strangely imperative. But I'm looking forward to the specific formula. I know that we've outlined some possibility, but I want to look, I look forward to us drilling down a little bit further. And then, of course, with the stakeholders that are involved in that drill now, I think that will be extremely helpful to us as leaders as we look to make these decisions. So I will be giving you all the call, most definitely, to set up a meeting as we continue these discussions.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And again, just to remind you, each of you has a detailed on a memory stick, all the requests that were provided, so you have all the detail. If there's a particular area you have in question, you can get more clarity by going direct to the requester's presentation.
Real quick, if I may add, so that I'm clear. I just want to make sure that we have a formalized process. So, you know, a lot of times we get put thoughts into something. But if we could actually assign a actual formalization, considering what to do this, I think it would give us a clear quantitative view and a qualitative view as we consider the serve of the community.
Any other questions?
Just kind of a comment. I just want to kind of, well, is there, well, are we accepting any other requests for fundings from any other resources?
We have not.
Okay. I'm saying are we, though, not have we, are we?
No.
Okay.
We gave all stakeholders a deadline to submit.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Well, I just commend y'all for the work you've done thus far. There's a lot of work goes into this. And I know the regulations and details continuously come down out of Washington, and we have to adjust ourselves accordingly. So I appreciate everything that y'all are doing. If there's nothing else, again, I appreciate the presentation. All right. Seeing that there's nothing else for this afternoon's agenda, we will stand adjourned. Have a great evening.